I'm the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners for Wednesday, April 23rd. Today's work session continues our department overview series. This is planning and zoning and codes. Like all of our work sessions, we, these are for informational purpose only. We don't take any actions at our work sessions. If you would like, we also don't take public comment. But if you'd like to make public comment on anything that here during our work session, we welcome that and we ask you to join our 5:30 business meeting and share your thoughts during our general public comment portion of the agenda. And with that, I see Carl is over there. We have Tanya and Jeff. Sarah, who should I kick this to?
I think you should kick it to Tanya, but I just will add Commissioner Reed is not able to attend this work session. She will be here for the 5:30 meeting. She is, I believe, at the statewide homeless, statewide homeless conference in Topeka today.
Good evening, commissioners. Hi, I'm Tanya Voight. I'm the zoning and codes director for Douglas County. And I'm here with Jeff Crick, who's the planning director for the city of Lawrence. And today we're going to discuss a little bit about the planning office, the zoning and codes office, and how our two offices work together. And I will kick it off with Jeff.
Good afternoon. And I will try to use the clicker here correctly and not skip seven slides ahead, but may have already messed up. Nope, I don't think I did. So just kind of an overview to kind of begin here. This is the team that you typically see coming from the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Office. I have a great chance to lead 11 wonderful people through the process that we have here. And Becky Pepper, the planning manager who oversees the day-to-day operations, has also joined us to kind of go through that. But this is the name of the people that we get to work with quite frequently. It's a long list of people. And we were trying to work through how many applications they see in a given year. And we just changed software systems, so the numbers don't quite line up, but they will see anywhere between 200 to 400 applications a year that'll roll through, including city and county applications. And so one of the things we talk about with that group of people is they end up learning, well, they're actually going to have their numbers reduced. We just dropped a code. But they learn three separate codes before they really have a chance to start working on applications. So they learn the county zoning regulations, the city zoning regulations, and then they learn the joint subdivision regulations for both. And so before they even start taking phone calls, they have to learn almost 2,000 pages of code, get really good at it, and then they can start helping people out. So really great team to work with on that front. So just to kind of clarify what goes on, because this is a question we get quite frequently with people calling in and I need to do this, who am I talking to the right office and that one. The planning commission, as some of you know, is a joint city-county planning commission. It's five county appointees, five city appointees, and they hear all cases. And one of the questions we get quite frequently is, well, do the county appointees hear city cases? Absolutely, yes. So all 10 will hear the items going up. And so there's a little bit of a misnomer. People think if it's a county item, only county appointees hear it. And well, everybody gets an equal say in those kinds of things there. The department is also a joint department. So when a planning application comes in for rezoning, if it's a city one or a county one, one of those planners will pick it up and run through the process there. Where we kind of split away is the city and the county have their own board of zoning appeals. So there's a city, county, there's, excuse me, there's a city one and a county one. The city also has its own version of the Heritage Conservation Council, which is the Historic Resources Commission. So if something comes through there, it'll go to that HRC versus going to the HCC that you would see here. So it's kind of the way that kind of splits is right there after the planning commission effectively. And so just to kind of give an overview of what all planning does is they handle 30 different application types that we put online. And so anybody can go online to a system which is called EPL and you can log in, you can submit an application 24/7 through there, anywhere in the county. So if you want to do a subdivision or you wanted to do a rezoning, they can log in, file it online Saturday night. If you know Netflix is not your thing and you want to rezone a property, you can definitely do it that way. But they do 30 different types of applications. And every day from eight to five, we have what's called Planner of the Day. So if anybody has a question about, is my setbacks for this, or what does this mean on this map, or what is a major thoroughfare, which we had a question quite a bit, they will pick those up and go through those with people. So we can do it online. We have an email address for that. We have a phone number and we just work that all the time.
I'm curious, so how busy is that line? Like, how many people are like, boy, I just really need the planner of the day today?
It will vary depending upon what's going on. Some days it feels like we're doing a hotline. Like every time you put the phone down, you pick it up, it's ringing again. It's just, it's one of those things. There are some days where we don't get calls at all for quite a bit of time. And so the planners are really working on, you know, different things, but it's feast or famine is how I would describe it sometimes. It just depends on what's going on. And so what part of what they're also doing with every time they're picking up an application is they're looking to make sure that we're implementing the land use plans and Plan 2040 as part of the process. And so Plan 2040 is a guiding document that we use. It is supposed to span for 20 years. And really what it does is encompass the 12 specific land use plans that we have in there. So you may have seen some of these come forward, the Northeast Area Plan, or the Revised Southern, or the West of K-10 Plan. And those are all housed inside of Plan 2040. And it's really the guiding document for the city and the county. How does it want to grow? What does it want to be? What does it see the future for both of them to be? But inside that plan are over 20 referenced plans. So Food Policy Council is in there. Lawrence Arts Commission Plan is in there. I'm running out of ideas where there's just a lot of them that are in there. But we use those as references too. So if something comes up in a rezoning and we want to reference that, or we want to kind of bring that in as a talking point, that's the connection that we bring in. So you'll see some that will come to you like Transportation 2050, where it's a city-county MPO, and that is also incorporated in there. And that's that continuity document that we use when we talk about a rezoning, special use or conditional use permits. We also take care of the text amendments to this zoning code for the county and the new land development code for the city, which is, I think, about 17 days old right now. But if there's an amendment that needs to come through or a change that needs to be made, the team takes a look at that one. And text amendments are not a impossible thing. There are people think they're very infrequent. They can come up quite a bit, but they take a lot of research to make sure that it is a seamless connection between the two. So it's not a, maybe a quick fix is sometimes we get the impression of, but it's a real holistic review when we go into those things. Because what you can do is go in fast and break something else, and we don't want to do that. So we really spend some time with those. And again, just as we talked about there, it is jointly funded between Lawrence and Douglas County. And the agreement goes all the way back to 1969, which establishes the joint planning commission as part of that.
So is it, is it your team for Plan 2040 and all of the interconnecting plans, like the 12 land use plans and the 20 reference plans within? Is it your team that's actually tracking all of the interconnected stakeholders and the objectives within those plans and seeing how they're connected and tracking any of those outcomes as well?
Well, the specific land use plans we do, but not for the ones that are more the reference plan. They usually have their own, like Food Policy Council Plan is a great one. The Food Policy Council does a great job of doing that. And if there is something that overlaps into a land use, they usually give us a call that we kind of figure out what those details are. But for the 12 specific land use we do and for Plan 2040, the rest we do is we have a lot of good coordination. But like Tanya and I talk quite frequently about the open space plan or those kinds of things where there may be some of that dovetailing into it. So we might not track all 20 of them, but we try to stay up on them because we understand as if something is coming into a land use conversation, it may affect something else. And so we want to make sure we're getting that voice or we're having that discussion. And I'll be honest, sometimes we may not get them all. We might not see those connections. And thankfully, we have good partners that will reach out to us and say, hey, this is, I'm seeing this, we need to elevate that. And that's where we always really value those partnerships.
Okay. So you've made a choice then to pull those plans in and to provide that connectivity, basically is kind of what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's been a community value since all the way back in Horizon 2020 is to just bring those all together to have a repository. So if we ever need them, they're there and available for us.
Thank you.
It's probably, maybe describe how they're adopted and then actually put into the plan.
The specific land use?
Yeah. Just as far as the reference plan is, I just want to be clear that those ultimately do come back to the commission.
Correct. So the specific land use plans will go through what we call the comprehensive plan amendment process. And it requires concurrence from the planning commission, the county commission, and the city commission before it can get adopted in there. So under a joint planning commission situation, planning commission elevates to the same level as the governing bodies. So for like Western, or excuse me, West of K-10 Plan, if that is a change, all three have to see the amendment and approve the amendment before it gets rolled into that one. For the referenced plans, there are instances where both the county commission and the city commission may need to approve it. There's also an instance where like in Transportation 2050, it's the MPO that would approve it. So it's kind of by proxy because there's a county appointee and city appointees and other partners that are on there. So that gets rolled and adopted that way. If it's just a plan that affects one governing body, if it's adopted by a resolution or adopted by an ordinance, then we roll it in as part of that. So if there was, the open space plan would be a very good example of that. If it's adopted, we roll it in because it's adopted by the body that is affecting it. And that's how we kind of package those up. So it's not just planning commission says, yeah, put this one in there. That is not how it gets, it takes a vote, it takes an action to commit that to the plan. And so this is a little bit about Plan 2040. And it's been, been a big part of my career, I will say, with, in working with the city and the county over the years. So it began in 2013 and it ran all the way through 2019. The best way to describe it is it was, it was public input from the very beginning to the very end. And so it had a lot of different stages and a lot of different iterations as part of that. And it, all of its history is online and you can take a look and see what it is there. But it really is that vision and expression of the desire of the future of the community. And two of you have heard this before and I apologize for repeating it. Horizon 2020 was really, was written in the early 90s. And the best way to describe it, it was written from the center of Lawrence out is the way I would describe it, how it was done. And we were very intentional with 2040 about writing it from the county lines in, because that would seem to be more of the way it is and what you want to do is that that work on the outside of those lines moving in impacts what cities will do. And you got to remember, it's, it is a Lawrence plan too, but it affects Udora and Baldwin and LaCompton just as much in some ways. And so we intentionally wrote from county lines to the center in this instance. But it really is that policy guide of what does our future land use goals look like? It is a, at its heart, it is a land use plan. And that's what makes it kind of different than some of the other ones where you might be talking about different elements or smaller parts. It is really a high-level land use plan and feeds into our codes in the way that we do. So property owners, it gives them a really good idea of how to identify what development might be occurring around them, or what to expect on annexation or something occurs. It's really kind of given that high-level look. And of course, I will always say is, it is a snapshot in time. It's not a static plan and it should never be. It needs to be revisited, adjusted, re-reviewed. There's a lot of assumptions that are in it and they may change over time. And so what we do as part of planning processes every so often is we have those conversations when an application comes up. Is it time to take a look at this? Does the specific land use plan need a reboot? We do it on an application-by-application basis. So if something comes in and it's rezoning, we may take a look at it and say, it's time for that to happen. You will see an app, I want coming up real soon is now it's going into its five years and we have new census data. We're going to bring forward an amendment that uploads the new census data to it, changes the zoning districts in there, because AG1, AG2 don't show up because that was the new code we haven't caught up to. City of Lawrence has a new zoning district code, so those will all need to get in. So you're going to see a cleanup amendment that kind of refines a lot of those things here very soon. It's really, it's all about the land uses is the best way I can describe 2040. So this is kind of a catch-all of the different application types that you can see. And these are more of the general ones you will see. There's probably some fewer ones that are very infrequent or not as obscured, but those are the ones you will typically tend to see. And so just kind of going through these, really always have a conversation. And I will give you the same kind of spiel I give to planning commission is planning commission can only recommend in most instances. There's only a very select few spots where they can be authoritative and do an approval. Otherwise, it's a recommendation to you all for what to do next. And so as part of what they do is they will go through something called ex parte. And if you ever watch a planning commission meeting, they do it at the very upfront of their meetings. And the ex parte communication is an information that you have that may affect the case or your vote on the case that you think other commissioners need to hear. And so what you hear the planning commissioners will say is, you know, I've had a conversation with so-and-so and they've told me this about the property and we had a very detailed conversation about that. Before you do cases like a rezoning or a conditional use permit, we always advise that you declare ex parte communications so that all of the commissioners have the same information when voting on an item. And that's a real strong thing you'll see with planning commission is they will do an ex parte call at the upfront. And some of them will have notebooks. I've talked to this many people and here's all the conversations I've had. And if they're a really charged case, it may be 20 minutes of ex parte getting cleared sometimes. When you do with this conditional use permit and rezoning, as you see them follow, it's called the golden criteria. And there's an eight list of the golden criteria and it's the different factors you have to do. And it's actually codified in the county zoning code. These are the factors you go through and you kind of, you know, has to meet this for the criteria and the neighborhood and these different aspects there. But I always caveat with is the golden criteria are not mandatory. They're rather a suggestive item from the state courts. And so what you may do is you may find that a case doesn't meet one golden criteria, but it meets all the others. And you think that's, that's far more important, or it meets all but the one, and you think that one is an absolute must. And so it gives you that framework to have the conversation about what should happen next. So it really, when you get into those, it's the quasi-dudalition applications is what you'll typically hear. When you're acting on a specific property or a specific request, that is when you hit those factors and that's when you hit those different criteria. So as part of this too, is you get into what's called a protesting or planning, we'll typically call it when you kind of, kind of reverse the votes. So if planning commission makes a recommendation for approval and you decide you want to make a recommendation for denial, a vote to the contrary requires a two-thirds majority under state statute. And so that would be four members would have to vote against it at the county commission to go contrary to a planning commission recommendation. Also, there is a part of the state statute where you have a protest petition where if more than 20% or more real property owners in the area are valid and submit a protest petition to the county clerk, that can trigger a supermajority required to adopt something. So you couldn't adopt it on a 3-2 vote, you'd have to adopt it on a 4-1. And so you would know that coming into the meeting in advance because those have to be certified before we put them on there. And so what you will typically hear from people is there is a delay between going from the planning commission to a governing body because there's a 14-day protest window in there and that window has to close before we can advance it up because we don't know if a valid petition is submitted. So a lot of people think I can go, you know, if you meet up, planning commission lies with on Monday, if I meet on Monday, I can get right to county on Wednesday. You got 14 days, sorry. And it's, that can be a little tricky sometimes with applicants on that, so. And I'll hand this to Tanya.
Okay, so I'm going to dive right into kind of our version of what our tiny office does. So where our zoning and codes office is a staff of eight. We currently have seven positions filled and one vacant position. And what we do is we, the office is broken up on the planning side where we're, some of our staff, like the planner, Carl Bauer, he's here today, does the planning work. Ben Harris and Leo Ronke, Leo's right now transitioning into the code enforcement position, but they focus primarily on building code and zoning code violations and bringing those into compliance. The zoning tech position is the admin position for the zoning staff. And then Terry Elmer is our chief building official. And his primary responsibility is to do plan review and inspections with the building inspector for any new construction, remodels, swimming pools, you name it, any, any of that type of development in the county. And then we have a permit tech that schedules those inspections and does the admin work for the building code set. So primarily in our office, we spend an awful lot of time talking about zoning. And of course, zoning and planning are always tied, but we've had zoning regulations since 1966 and we have the original paper zoning map. It's quite large framed in our office. And when, sometimes when we get zoning complaints or questions, we will go back to that original map to see if that property was zoned to the original zoning regulation. So it's really handy. It's a really neat kind of historical tool in our hallway and we use it quite a lot. So in 2020, as you all know, we did a pretty big zoning update. And that was primarily focused on, really focusing on taking the A District, which was the agricultural district, which really was all the zoning in the county except for commercial and industrial, and creating zones for that. So we created additional zoning districts that allowed us to consider things based on acreage sizes. A lot of times in counties, their biggest catch-all zoning district in the rural area is agricultural zoning districts. And those are really typically created to protect farmland and farming activities from incompatible land uses. Those districts identify the allowed uses, which are traditionally agricultural, which include agricultural structures. And then they decide what else is compatible with that. So if you think about the reason that roads and unincorporated areas were even built, it was to carry agricultural uses. So I think a lot of people think about it on the opposite end. They think about all of the things that a county could be doing and how, how they think it might have been created. But I think we try to look at it from the outside in and realize a lot of our roads were only traditionally meant to even carry tractors, not necessarily semis or that type of heavy truck traffic. But we evolve and adapt and Douglas County is one of those. So we allow residential land uses in combination with agricultural districts. So anytime you see a property that has either an AG1, which has a 20-acre rural requirement, or AG2, which has a 10-acre rural requirement, you will also see that residential houses are permitted by right use in those areas, as well as accessory dwelling units, which allow that secondary, smaller residence. Once you get outside of the houses and the farming uses, those typically are going to trigger something that's not permitted by right. So we do some registration processes that allow some more intense uses like agritourism or home-based businesses within those districts. But when you get into bigger, more intense, commercial-type uses or industrial, those are going to trigger either a CUP or a rezoning.
Hey, Tanya, when we, when we did the new code in 2020, how long had, how long have we been working on that code when we?
With all the amendments and text amendment changes since 1966. It's a living document for sure.
It was pretty much our original code. So we did a complete rewrite that finally got done in 2020.
One thing I think our main focus was on creating those agricultural zone districts. That was a huge focus to the creation of those major changes. I think in hindsight, one thing that we didn't spend a lot of time on that, you know, where the language is carried over from the old was industrial and commercial land uses. We didn't really see a lot of rezone requests. And though there were CUPs coming forward, it wasn't a huge part of like where we were spending our time. We were spending our time with a lot more agriculture, you know, type questions. And so I think that is something that as we evolve and adapt, I think those regulations you're going to see need some updates, especially when it comes to, you know, being able to look at traffic impacts and stormwater impacts and when that's required and when it's not required. I mean, it's confusing for us, so I'm sure it's confusing even for any bodies trying to make those decisions as well. So we would like to spend some time in the future on those types of uses. So next slide. Primarily what the zoning staff spends most of their everyday life in is doing property research. We provide general land use guidance to any landowners, realtors, investors, developers, just all different types of people asking questions. We're answering those daily. We meet with people one-on-one. We do a lot by email. We do provide zoning certifications. That's something where someone will say, we need more of a legal type document from your office. We want to know if this parcel is buildable. We want to know how much floodplain is on this parcel. And if it has, you know, enough acreage outside of the floodplain to build a house, we want to know if we have a vested right on the property. So if it's a rock quarry that predated the zoning regulations in 1966, they have a vested right to continue that operation, even though they don't have a CUP today. And so those, typically we prepare those documents and they're more, they get filed forever and anyone can look that up 25 years from now, the next person will be able to find that information. So we still dig up stuff from previous zoning directors all the time, those determinations. Another part of what we do is review planning items. So Jeff talked about all those applications that the planning office processes. And we've become pretty integrated in wanting to be involved in, on the more proactive side of that plan review. And that's mostly so that when the code enforcement side triggers after a land use has been approved, we feel like we understand how to enforce it, how, and how it was developed. Because often, conditions can be interpreted in many different ways. Another portion of what the zoning office does is survey review. So when land is split in the county, there are many variations of different types of land surveys. One of those is called the Ag Sub Survey. That was created in the 2020 regulations. And that allows people to split land and create buildable parcels. It goes through a review process, making sure it meets road frontage and setbacks and floodplain and sensitive lands, acreage size, you know, all those variations. And once that's been signed by the land surveyor in the zoning office, they know and any future owner knows it's a buildable parcel. So then they don't need to reach out for years and years asking if something's buildable. But outside of that, and platted lots have also gone through that permit review that says whether something's buildable. Certificates of survey, which you, most of the rural subdivisions in the county, that land use was created through a subdivision process called a certificate of survey. Those are all buildable. So those we don't really need to research, but every other parcel in the county, when we get an email, that actually requires deed research. So unlike a city where a parcel is zoned and platted and then any person who's buying one of those lots knows it's buildable, out in the county, if you have seven acres and it's not a part of any of those processes we talked about, we research, we deed research those parcels. And what we do is we verify that the parcel was created in conformance with the regulations at the time it was created, which creates, creates a vested status. And then we give them the information that it's buildable. It's a, I would say, I think we have over maybe 5,000 parcels in the county that research has been done. So it's really cool once you have someone reach out to you and it was done three years ago. So we're getting more efficient based on that information as long as it hasn't changed again. Because if it were 20 acres, someone split it down to 10 two years ago, then you're doing that research all over again to verify if it met that requirement. So that's pretty time and time-consuming, but great process, I think, that works well. Also, just something to mention is just how many different agencies that our office works with. So when you think of zoning and codes, that is not all our work, nowhere near it. You know, our staff is incredible and our office would be, you know, nothing without the amazing staff that we have today. But in addition to that, we're utilizing so many other technical experts and resources that help us make those decisions. So, you know, KDOT, Rural Water, the townships, Public Works, DWR, the Division of Water Resources, I mean, the core, Wildlife and Parks, it's just almost limitless to the number of people that we're reaching out to, to collaborate with, to make sure that determinations we're making work for everyone. Different types of applications that our office processes. So we process building permits. Zoning permits include ag exemptions. Oh, on the building side, this is residential, commercial, any accessory buildings or accessory dwelling units. On the zoning permit side, it's ag exemptions, floodplain permits, conditional use permit and site plans, special events and temporary business uses. And then we register vacation rentals now, home-based businesses and agritourism. We also process the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Construction Appeals. So we provide staff for that. And then the boards are comprised of different groups. So the Board of Zoning Appeals is five unincorporated landowners. The Board of Construction Appeals, I think, is four technical experts, which are contractors, so engineers, plumbers, electricians, those types of things. And the Board of Construction Appeals typically sees anything that might not be code compliant. If there is a contractor that doesn't agree with a failed inspection, they would go through that process. The Board of Zoning Appeals, their process is mostly setbacks, so roadside setbacks, side yard setbacks, pretty low-key issues. And then any appeal of a zoning director's determination. So if a zoning director makes a determination, a property owner has the right to appeal that to the Board of Zoning Appeals. On the building code side, we recently, two or three, two years ago, adopted the 2018 International Building Code. The major changes in that were primarily energy focused, mostly focusing on, you know, insulation requirements, blower door tests, just making sure homes were built tighter. And we operate under Chapter 13 of the county code, which adopts that building code. And Chapter 13 allows us to amend out anything that we may not want out of the 2018 Building Code, because it's an international code. So if the county were to see issues that, you know, was something that, you know, we couldn't get behind, we would amend that out through Chapter 13. And Terry Elmer, our chief building official, is here. So if you have any building code questions, it's easier to answer questions. Oh, I'm, so this is so cool. And I think I'd have to get up to click on it. But so we have a brand new GIS property viewer. This is a public layer available to anyone. They can click on a tool that says conditional use permits. And you can pan around the entire county and see all of our approved conditional use permits. You can see what they're approved for. You can see if you're looking at a property, you know, that you're interested in buying, it's always good to know if there's one near you. Because typically, those involve more traffic and more noise and things like that, that not always landowners are aware of. So we're really proud that this gets that information out in a way where they're not waiting on us to put an offer in on a property. They can do some of that research themselves. One thing we thought would be relevant and interesting is since the 2020 zoning changes, you know, what are we seeing the most in conditional use permit requests? And that still is rock quarries. And it's, you know, this includes amendments, expansions, that type of thing of quarries that have already been established and approved. Another, where you see landfill, those are clean rubble landfills that you guys have been seeing quite a bit about, especially for the highway expansion. And quite a bit related just to home-based businesses growing just a little bit big or people wanting to do more commercial typing activities on their property with the heavy equipment storage.
Where does Zombie Paintball fit?
So Zombie Paintball was a special event permit because it was temporary. So those, if they're just seasonal, I think they get up to 14 calendar days. And as long as they fall in that temporary, then those are processed under special events. Site plans, so our office, we enforce not only conditional use permits and the conditions of conditional use permits. We also enforce, a CUP requires a site plan, a physical document that shows where cars are coming in and out, where parking is, where the lighting is, you know, those various things. And so we, we are the enforcers of that. So if we get a lighting complaint for someone who has a class business, then we pull out the site plan, we see what was approved by planning, and then we follow up that way. The same was with site plans. So site plans are traditionally found more on lots that already have commercial or industrial zoning. So they already can do a very varied amount of things by right. But when they change that use or they're bringing in a new use, we still require them to site plan. And that's just so you can look at traffic and how they're coming in and out and if they have semis and what type of traffic, where their parking is, if they have ADA. It allows us, as those uses change, it allows us to also have them come up to current code standards as well. We already talked quite a bit about vacation rentals, agritourism and home-based businesses. These are a registration processes and many of those used to be CUPs. And your board used to see those very regularly. And they're pretty time intensive on creating staff reports, taking up the board's time. And we really feel really good that we're in a good place where we're administratively approving those. And then you're seeing variations that don't fit within the code standards that we can administratively approve. Another great map, it's a story map showing all of our registered agritourism uses. The public can go on there and they can map out their agritourism day if they wish and visit many farms, historic structures, UPICs, you name it.
I got a question. Is anybody accessing that database to prepare for the World Cup and potentially put together farm tours, anything like that?
I mean, I do think it's one of those things that there is a, well, I'll let you talk about the branch, but I met today with historical societies and they're working on it for historical purposes as well. So working on tours and an exhibit that's gonna, would be in, in order to see the whole exhibit, you would go to a couple of different historical sites. But yeah.
I'll just mention that that is part of the unified command structure. There is a branch that is specific to that, that question. So if there is any feedback, if anybody interested in that, there, again, is a working group that's looking at it. I think sort of the corollary to that is the Cow Valley Farm Tour that, that we have. So it's trying to look at something very similar to that as far as advocating sort of our agrarian roots here in Kansas and specifically Douglas County. But yeah, great question, though.
Another solution maybe to that is to also map our vacation rentals as they come under that registration process. So we're currently registering the first round of vacation rentals because those regs are fairly new. So we don't have everyone registered yet. They do require a life safety inspection with the chief building official. So we're, we're, we set up that inspection and then once that's completed, we make sure it meets all the other standards and, but a map might be very helpful for people who are looking for a place to stay as well. So kind of the big hot topic, which is the one that everyone loves to talk about the most, is code enforcement in our office. We did pull the top five code enforcement cases that we process on a regular basis. Those are always CUP and site plan compliance. So cars pulling in when they shouldn't, being open hours that they should not be, various things related to those business uses, junk, junk in waterways, junk in roads, junk in ditches, junk everywhere. So we do get a lot of junk complaints. And then we just coordinate with anyone we might need to, depending on where it's located. So if it's in a waterway, it's a different process than if it's in a county ditch or if it's on a township road versus a county road. So we just reach out to who we need to. Campers are probably our least favorite aspect of code enforcement. They're really hard to regulate. You know, campers in a mobile home or, sorry, in a camp park, so Lone Star Lake or Clinton Lake, those are, you know, where they're permitted to go. People who have campers on their own property obviously can have that. But we get a lot of people thinking that someone's living in a camper that they might not be. So that, that's a hard one to try to decipher if someone's permanently in it and using it as a dwelling or if it's, you know, just being used occasionally for recreational use. Building without permits, pretty common in our office. And then any of the nuisance situations, so noise, dogs barking, traffic noise, those types of things. So here's just some, just examples. The one was in a waterway, the big pile of junk. The 2019 flood had a shipping container that had not been anchored down and wasn't permitted. And it was close to hitting the Washington Creek Bridge. And then the bottom one is a home that had burned and that just didn't get cleaned up, didn't get demolished, didn't get crushed. And then it became sort of a septic cesspool. So the most exciting slide of the night is just, you know, what we're working on now and how we'd like to move forward. So we're, we've got a lot of momentum in a lot of different directions and we're doing a lot of great things. So we're lucky to be a part of the Open Space team. We really enjoy that work. That work is non-regulatory work. So, you know, it's nice to just have some of that kind of breath of fresh air some days. Site plans, one thing we do need to do with site plans, like we did with conditional use permits, we need to do all the research. So we need to pull all of our site plans now that we have them all scanned in and then just start comparing those with aerials and see if the businesses look like they have an up-to-date site plan. If they don't, we'll reach out and we'll work on that process with them. Salvage regs, some of you on the board have seen the first round of like just trying to decipher how many junk cars a property can have, what creates a junkyard, what doesn't. So we're going to be bringing those back, hopefully with a little bit more thoughtful approach on just how we identify them, how we define them, what the threshold is and where it needs to go into a different category. Battery energy storage regulations, that is also on our list for this year to get a draft to you. And another item that we've, the building code side has been working on is creating the possibility of coming to you with a tool for businesses in the county. These would be businesses that are open to the public. Currently, right now, we do not have a life safety program, which is where we would go out with the, so we've met with the fire chiefs. We would go out with the fire chiefs and the building inspector and do life safety inspections on businesses that are open to the public. And that really spurred honestly, more so by fire, you know, wanting to have us collaborate with them and wanting to have more of that enforcement tool alongside them because they do respond to sometimes to things that maybe not be code compliant or, you know, something that is burnt that maybe could have been prevented. So we hope to bring that, some ideas to you at least, and just get a thoughts on if that would be a supportive program in Douglas County. Most jurisdictions like the city of Lawrence, Baldwin City, Udora, they do do business inspections. And then the fee schedule. So I think we talked about this, it's been some time. Our fees, I'm not sure have, so the building code adopted new fees with the 2018 Building Code, but the zoning code, I think, are the original fees. So it might be time to just, you know, look at a $50 conditional use permit charge, you know, fee. So we'll be bringing that information to you as well, just trying to get a feel of where, where that should lie. You know, is that something that we want to recoup 20% or, you know, we, we'll just probably, we'll have to create a work session for that. I think that's going to need quite a bit of feedback before we know where to go with that. So we'll be back.
Not unusual for, in other communities, for zoning in codes and building codes to raise enough in fees to pay for themselves. That's never been our mentality here, but we are probably woefully behind in the going rate.
What's the current fee for a CUP application?
Is it $100? Oh, I think it's $100.
It doesn't quite cover your time now, does it?
Thank you, Jeff and Tanya, and thanks to your staff for being here. Any questions, commissioners?
No, just really appreciate the overview. I get to interact with your office quite a bit from just constituent questions. And it's always, it's always a pleasure just how much professionalism you all bring to the table with it. And I know you work with a lot of difficult topics that don't have easy solutions. And then it's kind of about, you know, listening to all sides and like, how can, how can we move forward even though a legal process or something might take a really long time? So I just appreciate your work.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd add is, you know, I think, you know, Tanya, you just kind of briefly talked about how many calls they get from citizens and residents related to buildings or homes or residences in ag. That is a way different and more complicated question in the unincorporated area than it is in the city of Lawrence. Because this, I mean, everything in Lawrence in a city has been platted. And oftentimes, like you guys are just, I mean, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot more intensive in terms of that research. And I just really appreciate that. I think this community, citizens don't know that. They think like, well, this should just all be easy to find and it's not.
Or they think that commissioners might know the answer.
Exactly.
It's a longer conversation. Can you talk to, what's the process of how a citizen would come to you for some of that land use or lot research or something?
So we ask, so we get, take walk-ins all day, every day during business hours. So we have a walk-in and we can take that. We'll start out with mostly gathering the information. So because every parcel likely requires research, we will, we also have a web inquiry tool on the website, so anyone can fill in the, I have a land use question that comes to our zoning email. And then we see who's the least busy and then we assign that work to staff members. But because everyone requires research, typically, people do not get the same answer the same time they're in our office, unless it's one of those few thousand that we've already done. And that feels really good when we can pull it up and we have already done that research. And we can send them away with a piece of paper and they're happy as a clam.
Well, thank you very much. Land use is one of the things that the county commission deals with quite a bit. So it's great to have the background and, and thanks to your staff again. There's nothing else, commissioners. We are adjourned into our 5:30 business meeting.